We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I do have a little bit of a problem with my voice this morning, as you can tell, so I may be handing off part of my talking responsibilities to the Vice Chairman and our Commission's Assistant, Stacy. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the Commission Agenda for an item not listed. Is there anyone here who would like to add something to our agenda? Seeing none. Item four is the approval of the Agenda. We will be removing the Executive Session at the end of the Agenda. Is there any other changes anybody else would like to have to the Agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve? The Agenda is amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five is a consent Agenda. We have approval of the minutes with documents listed, minutes in a work session minutes, approval of the travel and education documents, C, approval of personnel action notices, and D, approval of human services report with the document. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments? Okay. We'll have a roll call.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six is approval of the claims. And we do have those documents for cell phones and claims payable. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any comments? We'll call the roll.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is employee recognition of milestone anniversaries. I've asked Commissioner Larry Jensen to pass those out because you won't be able to hear me without a microphone, so Larry will do that. First recognitions for Sheriff Marty Stanwyck for 20 years of service. Marty, would you come forward?
On the certificate reads, certificate of appreciation presented to Marty Stanwyck on the 12th day of March 2019 by Brookings County Commission in recognition of 20 years of dedicated exceptional service as sheriff in the Brookings County Sheriff's Office.
Or you got Randy. Randy first. Heavy Equipment Operator Randy Ripstein, 35 years in March.
Certificate of appreciation for Randy Ripstein on this 12th day of March 2019 by Brookings County Commission in recognition of 35 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Highway Department. Thank you. Next, Bob Hill.
Certificate of appreciation is presented to Robert Hill on this 12th day of March 2019 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of 20 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Development Department. Thank you, Bob. Congratulations.
Certificate of appreciation is presented to Jacob Bramer on the 12th day of March 2019 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of 10 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Department of Equalization.
Thank you, Larry, and thank all of you for your service, especially that 35 years for Randy. That's pretty impressive, Randy, 35 years. Thank you. Item C is the Department Head Reports. We're going to start with Brian with the Highway Department. He did have a document presented, so Brian.
Good morning. Well, you guys can see on my document there, we've been getting a lot of snow. I'm sure everybody's noticed that. If it hasn't been snow and it's been blowing, so I would like to commend the crew on the job they've been doing. Seems like day after day, we're dealing with some sort of issues that Mother Nature's throwing at us, so I do want to commend them. They're the ones that are out there making it happen. Last or on February 27th and 28th, I attended the asphalt conference in Pier. I had never been there before, but did find out some things from some contractors about some supply issues, and we'll cover that later when we look at our bids. March 6th, Pram Construction set the closure for construction of the two bridges on Brookings County 77. Little later than what they had anticipated, they ran into some issues with some one calls and the contractors were out there and did the one calls, and then they got covered up by snow, so they had to reset the one call up to properly install the signage for closure. So it did get pushed back a little bit compared to what they were thinking. Annual supplies and materials. We opened bids on March 5th, and we'll be approving or I'll be recommending for approval today, March 26th, 27th, and 28th. I will be attending the 58th South Dakota Highway Superintendent's Association Short Course Program and manure pipe easement. We're continuing to look at that. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Brian?
How is your snow removal budget looking?
We'll be looking at that at the next meeting, but kind of we're rolling along fairly decent. We're lucky as far as where we're sitting at with salt with the expected rain we're supposed to get, so I think we'll be, we should be in good shape.
I know that Bob has requested some sand for people to fill sandbags. Are we able to get that accomplished here?
I'm working on that, trying to get caught up a little bit here with the ice that we had from this last weekend, so as we catch a little breather here, we'll try to get some in possibly before it rains.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Brian, did you want to discuss the advertisement for bids?
I guess we have an advertisement that Banner had put together for the bridge on 27th, south of the power generation plant. We're going to be advertising for that. Is there any issues that you guys see with that?
Don't have any. No questions?
No.
Because we're ready. Thank you, Brian.
You bet.
Kristen of Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center, report.
Good morning. I actually gave you a real report this time, so I'm going to pat myself on the back for getting that in on time. Do you guys have any questions on what I provided? And then after that, I'll just give you a quick update on a couple of things.
Any questions on our written report?
Nope. All right. So just a quick update. We did have a little bit of a leak in a pipe that occurred last Sunday, sun's thin. New tech, Tom was called, and we did get that under control. We did have to close the facility until Thursday just because there was a lot of machinery, cords, things like that. And we do still have holes in the wall that'll have to be repaired later on. We will have to the spring, go ahead, go into the wall, cut it out, fix it, and then we'll have to do some preemptive measures later on. We do have about six events that are supposed to be happening during the course of this week. I did just receive a text message from one of them asking us to reschedule, so we will kind of take this week by ear. We all know the state of the parking lot, and with the potential for flooding, we're going to just have to play that by ear. Do you guys have any suggestions for what to do if we really do get that amount of water, knowing the drainage issues that we do have? Or do I just play it like July of last year?
It's kind of beyond my pay grade. Maybe you could borrow some canoes?
I actually thought about getting sleds and renting sleds for that big hill we have, but I don't know what our insurance would think of that.
Yeah.
So other than that, we'll just kind of play it by ear for the water and kind of how we run. Other than that, any questions for me?
Kristen, based on your totals and stuff for February, are you, are you close to within over your projected revenue stream at this point?
For this year, we're over.
Okay. And for February itself?
For February itself, we're way over.
Awesome.
In fact, we were only open two days last week, and we still were right in line with where we were for the second week of February. And realize, we've closed nine days because of weather, inclement weather, and we're still over.
The pipe leak, was that sprinkler system related, or was that plumbing related?
That was the spigot outside of the building ended up having a crack in the pipe at the elbow, and so we probably will still have water that'll leak into the building from the crack down as soon as that thaws. Any other questions?
No other questions? Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks.
Move on to Marty.
Morning.
The, thank you for the certificate. I was also thinking about doing something for my staff too, for, you know, to kind of boost. It's been a long winter, and I know there's some other agencies. Pennington County does this, and they got Employee of the Month. You know, somebody nominates an employee, and I don't know if they let them park out the closest parking spot out in front of the sheriff's office or something, but sometimes little things mean a lot, you know, dislike the certificates and those types of things. So I may start doing something at the office to, to recognize employees that do good work for, for the county. And I want to thank County Highway too. It's been a tough winter. It was getting to the point when the, when it was snowing is that the tow trucks, when somebody got stranded in a snowbank on a county road, they didn't, the tow trucks didn't want to go out unless they could get there. So guess who they sent? They send the deputy out to see if he can get there and not get stuck. And a couple of times, we had to call a highway to come out with a payloader and clear a way so we could get to, to the person so that the tow truck could get to the person. And the Highway Department's been really good about doing those things. And also, when I was at the county, at the township meeting the other night, we were talking about some things and township roads and so forth. And there was a couple of farmers that came up to me afterwards and gave me their names and said that if they had, if there any problem near them, that they would bring their big tractor and snow blower to help too. So that kind of, that's kind of, that's kind of nice too. So anyway, winter's been tough on, on equipment. I know on his equipment and on mine, I think we've had six, six patrol cars have been stuck and had to call tow to come get us out. And one deputy was on the way to a type of emergency call in Aurora, and he was plowing through snow roofs, or snowdrifts and did about $3,000 damage to his car to get through the drifts. And then in Brookings, I had a deputy that was going down Fourth Street. The good thing about it, it's not his fault, but he was involved in an accident at Ninth Avenue and Fourth Street, and a car went through a yield sign and clipped mine. The snowbanks are so tall everywhere, even in the smaller towns in Brookings, and even though you may have the right of way, you need to slow down and make sure the other person's going to yield or whatever. So the car is totaled. They totaled the car. The good thing is that I was going to take it out of the fleet anyway. That was to be replaced, but it was supposed to go to the jail for transport. So when I get the insurance check on the vehicle, which the other party will pay for, the other party did get a ticket for, for the yield sign, I may look at something through here in surplus because I don't need a police package vehicle to replace that one to give to the jails for, for a transport. I don't know if you guys are ready to get rid of the Traverse. I'll buy that from you. Guys want a new one, something new, but anyway.
No.
Something.
No.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, so if it's okay, I will look for that, but I'll, I'll visit more about that with you. Let's, updated on the hiring. You know, I had two deputies that went to the city police. I've hired one, Jeff Conrad, and at some point, I'll bring these in, these individuals into and introduce you. He came from the University Police Department. He's got some experience up there, then he was a deputy sheriff in Minnesota, and he's already started. He's in training right now. I don't expect him to be, normally the training with us is 13 weeks. I don't expect him to be in a car with a training officer for 13 weeks. Also, the other person, the other individual I hired comes from Marshall County. He has eight years as a deputy sheriff in Marshall County. He's going to start April 1st, and I don't anticipate him to be in training for 13 weeks either. He, he knows how to be a deputy sheriff. He just needs to learn Brookings. The bad thing is, I've had a third resignation, Chuck Umberger. He was one of my investigators. This one's a little tough on me because he's been with me for 14 years. He's did a lot of my coroner stuff, and he's going to be, he's going to be tough. He was kind of my, my go around guy. I could send him. He was with SWAT, my firearms instructor, a lot of, he did a lot of things for the department, so good officer. He's, he's leaving for personal reasons. He's going to Lincoln County by Sioux Falls, and he's going to be a hard one to replace. 14 years as a deputy, and it's, he's going to be a tough one. I hate to see him go. I tried to talk him out of it. Thought I had it, but he decided to take the job, so. Another thing that I just want to kind of put in for future reference is that the animal control officer that's worked for the city for I don't know how many years, it's got to be 30, he is retiring, and he's got, because when he, because the county also has him on our payroll. He's a part-time animal control for me, so I do visit with him once in a while, and every time I see him, he tells me how many days he's got left. He's got like 24 days now left, but he's going to continue to do part-time stuff for us. The only problem is, is now that he's leaving, I think the city's going to restructure their animal control, so there may, we have a contract with animal control right now to take, to house our animals at, at Brookings Animal Control. I think they're going to rewrite that contract now. I think they're going to reconstruct animal control. So I know one thing it is, is the price is going to go up. And right now, if I take an animal to Brookings Animal Control, it's $60. It's, and by, by county ordinance, we have to hold a stray animal for five days. So it's $60 for that five days. They intend to, the way I understand, to double that. It'll be $120 with a new contract. So when the, when I get the new contract, I'll bring it to you, to the Commission. I mean, it should be between the Commission and, and the city and not me. Now, the last contract is that you signed off on that too, but here's, here's, here's the problem. So when I, if you take a cat there, if you take a cat, one cat, it's going to be $120 for that cat to be there. I enforce all the contract towns' animal control, except I have it in the contract of contract law is that the City of White, the City of Auga, City of Elkton, they're responsible for their own animal control. So when, what I should say is for the cost. So then I'll have our animal control take care of it, but then I pay it for, I pay it upfront, and then I bill those towns for those expenses. But the county, in, in the county ordinance, which was done before I came into office, so it was, it was wrote in 1998, because I came into office in 99. They had a nice ordinance for animal control. However, you know, how do you enforce all these? You know, who, who's going to enforce it? And that's why we got into animal control, because they're experienced. And when you have a dog bite, you gotta, you gotta impound the dog for 10 days and watch it, and there's just a lot to it with when it comes to animal control. What I'm getting at is that in the county ordinance, we have cats. And so if, if a farmer, if somebody on the acreage has a cat they want to get rid of, they can call and say it's a stray, and by our ordinance, I have to go get it and take it in. What I would like to do is just put the, put this into your thought process, is I would like to eliminate cats in the county ordinance. You know, because what a lot of them do is they'll, a lot of people will dump off cats in the county, and then someone will adopt that cat for two or three weeks, and then they decide they don't want that cat. Then they call up and say it's a stray. And all they got to say it's a stray, and then we come and, we come and get them. What I'd like to do is eliminate the cat out of the ordinance. And if they, if they have a baby or have a cat, a mom, a cat, and three babies, tell them just take it right directly to the Humane Society, and there may be a fee there. But I just think it's going to get a little costly for us.
I guess my suggestion, Marty, at this point is why don't you put that proposal together for us and bring it to a meeting?
Yeah. And what, and I, I'm sorry that I'm getting too long on this, but I just want to kind of put a bug in here that we need to probably talk about cats.
Just go ahead and get that ready.
I still have to enforce the cats in the, in the cities because they got city ordinances that, and they want that enforced, but I think in the county, it's, it's a, I think we could probably maybe eliminate the cat, the cats, anyway.
So would it be possible, when you come back, Marty, to give us some information on how many animals are getting taken to animal control from the county? Not necessarily those towns, although it'd be interesting, but just how many are we paying for anyway?
Sure. And I actually have all that information. He gives me a yearly report and so forth, so I can bring that forward. We had a good working relationship with Dwayne in the present contract, but there's no doubt when there's change in city manager and changes that, that there's always changes, so.
And maybe Stacy could email all of us a copy of that ordinance so we have a chance to look at it, the current one.
Okay. Anything else?
The only other thing is, is that with, hopefully, winter is getting over. I don't know. It sounds like we got winter this week yet too. But we have that UTV, and well, we bought that UTV. It's a used one, and we bought it after those two brothers have perished in the slough west of town, you know, for search and rescue and those types of things, is that with all the snow and I was starting to worry about people being stuck on township roads and things like that and not being able to get to them, so I did call Game Fish and Parks and ask them if they had any extra snowmobiles. I thought maybe I could commandeer a snowmobile if we had to use it. Now, there is Dakota Drifters, and they are willing to go out if we had someone stranded. They also have what they call a snow ambulance. It's kind of a toboggan with a hood over it, so we could use that if we had to. But when, anyway, when I talked to Game Fish and Parks, they had got rid of all their snowmobiles because it just wasn't practical. A lot of times, there wasn't a lot of snow, didn't use them. They went to all UTVs. But what they do in the fall is they put tracks on them, and they said that they can go through about anything with tracks. Well, anyway, I did some shopping for tracks to buy a new set. They're $5,000. They're not cheap. But I called a guy in town, a businessman that's got all the gadgets in the world, and I says, you don't have any tracks for a ranger? And he goes, yes, I do. I have, I have a brand new set that he's never used, and he, for $3,500. I just don't know if it's, I don't have it budgeted, and I could maybe work it out in my budget. I just don't know if it's worthwhile to, to think of something like that, to put tracks on them. They said when they had that big storm out west a couple of years, or a few years ago, remember when the, the early spring one where the cows, a lot of the cows perished in the pasture and stuff, they used those, and they got about everywhere. And what brought it to my attention was I had someone coming from Minnesota going across township roads and gravel roads to get the base and electric. He got stuck, and he didn't know where he was at. And of course, we were trying to figure it out by his cell phone. Actually, the tow truck, he did call a tow, actually, a tow truck driver found him before my deputy did. But he was able to get to him. I guess, so I'm looking at it as if I had to go rescue somebody, I could call Dakota Drifters, and they would bring their snowmobiles out. The Brookings Fire Department has a lot of their members are Dakota Drifters, so I could use that. But the other thing I was thinking about, you know, would it be worth putting these tracks on my UTV if I had to use it? So you guys, does the Commission have any? Then I'll quit talking.
I think it's great to be able to use Dakota Drifters for those types of situations. They like to do public service, and they're aggressively going to help you if they need to. I know that.
And we could do that. That's, that's not a problem. I got them, I got them on after-hours call and stuff like that, so.
All right.
And I guess my question would be the fire department, and I don't think it was in 18, I think it was in 17 where they did that fundraiser drive to buy a piece of equipment just for this type of situation.
And that's, that's what, that's what that, it's like a toboggan with a cover over it, and that's their snow ambulance. So that can go behind a snowmobile or a UTV or anything. So that's, that's available. And I did call the fire department to ask them if they would be available to help us, and they, and they are, so.
Marty, the White Fire Department also has one of those snow trailers behind a snowmobile in their fire department. So it was donated to the fire department, and many of the members have snowmobiles, so.
So we'll, I just wanted to bring it, bring it by, just to see what you thought, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vicki, your report?
Good morning. Just to give you an update on our office, we are finishing the annual report, and that will be presented at the next meeting in March, and that went well. And we've been meeting, I've met with several township officers regarding their annual reports and all of their paperwork and helped them with that, and they've been bringing in their paperwork. It's due by March 22nd, so we've been dealing with a lot of townships. And we have four properties that the taxes are, the four years that we are starting to take, starting proceedings to take tax deed. One of them came in and paid in full, so we're down to three. So hopefully, they will get paid, but I'll keep you informed on that. So that's kind of the update from our office. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Vicki. Go to Jacob.
Morning. First, I just want to thank you for the certificate of recognition. I don't hardly believe it's been 10 years that I've been here, and I credit that to enjoying my work and enjoying the people that I work with. Minor update from our office is we're coming up on the deadline for the local board notification of appeal. That is Thursday at 5 o'clock. As of this point, or as of this morning, we had zero appeals, and we have about 10 to 12 corrections to bring forward.
Okay. Any questions?
I'd just like to say you did a good, good presentation at the Towns and Township meeting.
Thank you.
I'd second that.
Yep. Well, that's good presentation. Thank you, Jacob. Bob? Or Mike? Wait a minute, Bob, let's get Mike up here and get him out and misting. We'll save the best for last here.
Oh, you kind of bounced around a little bit on this. Anyway, good morning. Only thing I would like to say is it has been a long winter. Our DAV van did get stuck going to Sioux Falls. Of course, they leave about 6:00 in the morning before things are all plowed out. Otherwise, I do go up to campus once a month to meet with the VARC, the Veterans Resource Center, and that's been very helpful. The other thing I would like to talk on is the number of medical applications that we've been getting in. Last year, we had 384 that we processed, and this year, we are already at 110. And as you know, we're only about a third of the way through the year, or a quarter of the way through the year, so anticipate that number being a lot larger. And the other thing is, is that we've run out of, out of our FEMA funds and the other monies that we've had, so even though my budget looks pretty good, we'll start seeing more money coming out for rent and utilities.
All right. Any questions?
I was going to ask, Mike, your volunteers to drive the DAV van, are you, how are you sitting there?
Right now, we, we're down, we could use probably two or three more. It is quite a long process to get through them. You have to go down and basically get a commercial driver's license exam, physical, and then there's two other trips you go down for training, so. But if anyone would be available or would be interested, you know, anyone in the community, you don't have to be a veteran, okay? All you have to do is be able to donate some of your time to drive the van down. As you know, it's, most time, it's going to be about a four-hour period just because of the the distance down there and back. But, um, if anyone has, you know, that kinda time, we're more than, uh, we would actually appreciate anyone else that would be interested. Again, you don't have to be a veteran or associated with the military at all, it's just volunteers that are, that are able to drive, have good driving records and can pass physical.
Any other questions? Thank you Mike. Miss Steve, we're gonna do you next and then we'll do Bob.
Good morning. I will start out, we had our annual Towns and Township meeting on March 7th, I seen a, three of you there, I believe, thank you for attending. It was a little bit of a mix-up in the beginning and throughout the day, uh, the towns and townships had a speaker or two that didn't show up, so I was rearranging speakers. Thank you to Marty for speaking ahead of time and then I'm very thankful for Paul Johnson from SDSU being there. He brought a screen, we, we needed it and maybe that's something we can look into for future meetings, to have a projection screen instead of using the wall. He helped out tremendously. It turned out to be a pretty decent meeting. Uh, I was not able to take any notes, so from what I heard, I kept it up here and I think I've got everything down, otherwise it went well and everybody enjoyed the meeting. Uh, we had eight townships sign up for gopher trapping or gopher poisoning this year and five townships for spraying so far. Now, they have till April 3rd before they have to have all that information into me. I do know there was th, three townships that asked me to come to their township meeting, um, after we opened bids, so I had a definite price for them and wasn't leading them astray. So I will be attending probably three of them as soon as they let me know when their meetings are. Um, and the bids were opened. Is there any questions on the annual Towns and Township meeting? Anything you think I could do different next year?
Did you get much feedback from the people on facilities since this was our first time out there, or?
The only feedback I got was there was no sign on, on, uh, 22nd Avenue stating this is where the Towns and Township Annual Meeting was. That's the only, otherwise, everybody enjoyed it. I didn't get any negative feedback, if that's what you were curious. So, we did open bids March 8th, uh, I will, that's on the agenda for the next commission meeting and we'll go through all that, prices and what we're gonna charge townships, uh, DOT, all that kinda stuff. But otherwise, I don't have any other information for you, do you have any information for me, or questions?
Any comments? No comments, congratulations on a successful meeting, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Hill. Morning.
We'll go through the good news first, for those of you going to PEAR, you're expected to get 16 inches of snow between March 12th and March 15th. 16 inches of snow, no ice, 1.18 inches of precipitation and wind gusts of 55 miles an hour.
The meeting was canceled, Bob.
So much for that thunder being stole. Okay, next up, I did attend the NACO conference with, legislative conference with Commissioner Bartley. We, I'm on the Ju, Justice and Public Safety Committee, we did talk heavily on the mental health in jails issue that came up in just about every meeting that we had. One of the big issues is also the losing of the, the benefits such as Medicare and, and military benefits while you're being held in jail before you're, you're convicted. Those are, those are both highly, highly, were hot topics that was, was brought up. We also discussed things like emergency management performance grants, that's the grant that we get, it's from FEMA, brought down through the state of South Dakota. One interesting thing that came up that you may see in the future is the, you know, the state of South Dakota helps the county pay for the veteran service officers. Now they're trying to make that a national program, it won't, may not affect South Dakota too much, but they are looking at the same program as they do for emergency managers, you know, money comes from the federal government down to the state, down to the local, they're looking to do the same for county veteran service officers. And that, that won't necessarily help South Dakota, but it'll help the rest of the, the nation. We did have meetings and we, and I did, I personally discussed emergency management topics with Senators Thune and Rounds and Representative Johnson and of course, Commissioner Bartley will explain what he discussed at a later date. I had a booth at the Brookings Home Show, it was an emergency management booth, didn't have any other county people that wanted to show up, so I sat there for two days. Had a lot of discussion on flooding, which we'll be discussing here in just a second. Uh, I had a, had a quarterly visit from my South Dakota Officer Emergency Management Character, Tom Poots, and we had a meeting scheduled for Thursday in Mitchell that has been canceled for Homeland Security Grants, so the sheriff don't have to go, go to Mitchell on Thursday, that will be rescheduled at a different date. This is, is gonna be a humdinger of a storm, it looks like. I did go on the radio this morning, WKRB, 1430, we discussed the flooding issue, the, I have requested it sand be placed outside the highway department, this is not inside the highway department, this is outside in the, in the, uh, parking area up against the fence. Highway Superintendent has, has, is working with me on that, we will, once we get the sand set in place outside, we'll put out a press release. At this stage in the game, individuals needing sandbags, there are sandbags available at local hardware stores. I know, I hate to name names, but the, the biggest hardware store in town and the second biggest hardware store in town, both of them have sandbags available to be purchased and that's what should happen at this stage in the game. If we declare an emergency, if we get so much flooding that the public infrastructure starts to go under and the county commission declares a, a state of emergency, then the commission can authorize me to give out sandbags of our own, but, uh, the sandbags we got on hand right now are, are to protect public infrastructure, not necessarily individual houses. And there, and I've had some calls on people worried about water coming down, so much snow is piled up, they're afraid it's gonna come down and go right into like patio doors and things like that. So, my recommendation is go to, go to the hardware store, buy you some sandbags, place them down and, um, you know, if you got a, if you got a downspout, I realize you got, got ice in your downspout right now, but if we keep getting these 40-degree days, that ice will break loose, so you need to go out with your shovel or pick and make some way for that water to go to the drainage system. And if you got snow around your house, you need to, need to go out there and shovel a foot or two away from your house, so it won't necessarily go straight into your, your drain tunnel. And the biggest thing people need to do is go in your basement, pour a couple gallons of water into your sump pump and see if it works. Cause over the wintertime, sometimes rats, mice, yes, people still get mice in their basement, something will get into your sump pump and jam it up and you won't be able to, you do not wanna find out at 3:00 in the morning that your sump pump does not work. So, okay, next up, the fire department does have a snow ambulance, the tracks on four-wheelers, we would not have been able to do Brush Lake without them, just for information. Okay, we had a zoning meeting March 7th, we got a plaque coming up here in a few minutes, Homeland Security meeting's canceled. Next up is the radio, radio situation in Brookings County. Brookings County, we've got three repeaters that we own. I own, emergency management has a repeater down at the highway shop on top of the highway building that I pay maintenance for. I've got a county fire repeater that I pay maintenance on at the Blue Water Tower on 20th Street and there's a repeater down in Sinai on top of the elevator that I pay maintenance on, and I pay maintenance on one of the, one of the base stations at the 911 center that the county fire radios go into. We got a problem up north, we had to lower, or, or, they, the antenna was, we had a tower up north, it was, I believe a 200-foot tower that was removed, or 190-foot tower, was removed. They took the, they took the repeater that was on that tower and lowered it approximately 100 feet, plus or minus, and put it on a grain bin or corn, corn bin. And since then, we've had nothing but issue, radio issues up between White and Bruce area and that, that whole area. The owner of the tower that had, was taken down is looking at a site that's gonna be seven miles to the east of where this particular tower was. So even if that tower goes back up, the biggest fear that we've got is we're gonna lose coverage in Bruce. That would, that would, you still get coverage in White with the, with the new location if they get it. And, um, but our, our biggest fear is we're gonna lose coverage in Bruce and every community is as important as the other community. So what I would like to approach the commission with is, we can have a computer simulation run that would tell us where to locate a repeater in that area that would cover both, both towns if possible. And it'd be $1,600 for the, for the computer simulation. And, um, I'd like to get permission from the commission to go ahead and run that, have that computer simulation run and then we could, hopefully they'll tell us, and during that simulation, I'm hoping they can tell us, is there a, a location to put the, the thing, like a rural water tower or, or something that we can, we can use? Cause if we have to put a new tower up, you're looking at, oh, $390,000 for towers. And that, that, you can step down to my office and look, that's the price of a new Met tower being put in over by White. So, communication towers are not cheap. If we can, if we can find a location of a tower, it's already there or a high building that we can put a repeater on, we'll end up saving money in the long run.
Any questions? Thoughts on the process? I think we probably have to run the computer simulation just to know where the most effective site is and then go out and find out if there's a site.
And then go out and find a, a, a location high enough, water tower or, or whatever we can.
And is this with the company that's doing the maintenance now or a different company?
Well, this, uh, this would be a Motorola test on this particular one, they're the ones that control, and, and I've got maintenance contacts with on my southern communications equipment.
Okay.
Cause right now, we're leasing a tower, we're releasing, we're basically, we're releasing the repeater. Probably what's, what I'm gonna end up doing is coming back in, once we find a good location, hopefully we can find a location for one, but we, it may pay us to go ahead and put our own repeater up under our, under our own control. Then we won't have this happen again where all of a sudden, someone loses, loses a contract on a location site and the repeater gets moved and we don't, don't even know about it immediately.
Okay.
But right now, I'm only looking for $1,600 to run a com, computer simulation on two towns, the town of Bruce and the, and, or cities of Bruce and cities of White.
Bob, is that the only part of the county where we have a coverage problem?
Well, we, down south, we do hear some, some issues and once we get this northern part done, we've got, we've got, uh, Elkton and we got Volga and, from what I understand from the radio people, Elkton should be hitting our south tower, but some of the radios may be set up for the north tower, north stuff. So we, we're gonna have to, once we figure out the north repeater location, we're gonna go down and my office may have to go and, and, and have a big county, county fire department meeting and have Sioux Falls, Two Way or some radio company come up and make sure all the radios are programmed to the right towers. Cause we do have two different, two different, we got a north repeater and a south repeater and some of the radios are hitting the south repeater and some are hitting the north, some radios you have to manually switch to go to a different repeater. And if they're not doing that, then they will get static. So, long answer to your short question.
I sat through all those meetings when I was chair and listened to this conversation a lot and I'm not opposed to us paying $1,600 to have a, i, if, if this is something that'll help fix the problem. It's just my thoughts that we should be doing it for the whole county and not just one for one area so that we know we've got coverage everywhere, we need to have coverage. And I've heard the complaints in the south part of the county.
That's, you said Motorola will do the test for us?
Yeah, this, this is a Motorola contract that I'm looking at.
When, and it's a separate company that lowered the tower 100 feet?
Yes, that's a company called Van...
I mean, when they lowered that tower 100 feet, they had to realize that the coverage for these communications would be depleted. Why at that time wasn't, didn't that company do this test? That company should be able to do the same test, can't they, or not?
Well, they don't, they cannot do the Motorola test, no. Whether or not they got their own simulation software, I don't...
Well, I'm all for getting this test done, I mean, we need to get it done yesterday. I mean, this is something that's, uh, very important to the fire departments, ambulance service and, and the, the whole community.
I'm gonna suggest that, that we go ahead with this one to get started, but get price quotes on the entire county so we can get that account pushed in the next year also with everybody tested at the same time. And then put together a comprehensive plan, once the white tower issue is fixed, to address all of it.
Well, if you, I mean, if you want the complete county done with the same test, that, that could be done, it's just you add $800 per town, per community. So if you want that done now, I can, I can do that now, just, um...
Would that be the commission's? Does that, do it all right now?
I think it makes sense to negotiate it once rather than five times.
I could see if I can get a cheaper price that way, I, I'm not sure I can, but, so you were referring to Elkton, Volga, Sinai, Bruce and White, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's all the ones that's got fire, fire stations? Okay, I'll see what kinda price, but then do I have permission to go ahead and go?
Without objection, you got permission.
Okay. Very good, and that's, that's, I've got a plaque coming up in a little bit, but other than that, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7, our agenda, scheduled agenda items, and we don't have any today and that's good because we have the entire alphabet filled except for Z and sub-things in between adds up to the alphabet again, so we're gonna get started here. Yeah, and we'll see how I do here. On a regular business, item 8, action A is to approve, action to approve resolution number 19-10, a plat of WWTF Lagoon Edition in the north one-half of section 24, Township 110 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Primarily in Brookings County, South Dakota, is our motion to approve.
So move.
Motion been made in second, any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion passes. Item B, an action to rescind resolution number 16-12, a resolution to formally establish the Brookings County Jail Expansion Advisory Committee, is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Uh, we could probably give you a quick explanation of this or if there's any comments. Our commission hasn't met for quite a while, we have to establish the commission by resolution, we also have to, uh, disband it by resolution. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is an action to rescind resolution number 19-09, a letter of contract between Brookings County and Batter Associates, Inc. for construction administrative services for overlay projects, is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Motion been made in second, any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, an action to approve agreement number 19-09, a letter of contract between Brookings County and Batter Associates, Inc. for construction administration services for overlay projects. This looks like the same one.
Approval.
This is agreement, okay. Motion been made to approve, a second? Do we hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion been made in second, any comments? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Hi. Borsma, Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E is an action to approve agreement number 19-12, an app... Item E is an action to approve agreement number 19-12, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Volga Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Item F is an action to approve agreement number 19-13, an easement agreed for use of county road right-of-way made by Old Tree Farms, Frightover, Palin. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, any comments?
I would just like, and perhaps Mr. Hill would be the right person to explain when we do this and when we don't do this. The manure.
Do this anytime that they want to run them pipes under our county highway. And it's always, it's looked at by the highway superintendent, the culverts are in place, they're required to be bored, there's no digging through our highway. And it's always on a non-drainage area such as a high spot, it's not on a low spot where water would pile up in case there was a leak. And it keeps, it just basically allows the holes to go through the, under the ground instead of, obviously we don't want it on top of the, you don't want to run over a fire hole driving down the road.
Any other comments?
Just for the listening public, because I want to, I think I understand what we're doing and I just want to be clear on this. We do not allow people to run the manure drainage hose just through our ditches. You only can go underneath from one piece of your property to another piece of property under the road, is that right?
As far as I know, well, this particular easement is strictly to go horizontally across our road.
Right.
Yeah, this is not given permission to go down the right-of-way.
Right.
Mr. Jensen?
Brian, were you aware of this application?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Your thoughts, Brian? This is the permit process we're going to be taking a look at. So I guess any parties that would like to be involved. My issue with this permit is if I'm going to be, if it's going to be going underneath one of our roads, I would like to have a spot where I would sign the permit. And then possibly a little more detail as far as making sure we're not putting these in an area where it could cause an issue with drainage.
In the past, it was, the highway superintendent would meet with the individual and decide on a site before the permit was presented and then a map was provided.
Right.
That's why I asked if you were aware of this.
And these two permits were both mailed in. And I guess that's another issue I have with them is there was no contact from individuals other than it just ended up on my desk.
Any other comments?
I guess I'd like Brian to look at the site that they're referring to and make sure it's okay with the highway department.
And that's something I'd like to make sure that's in the literature in the document.
Are you requesting a tabling of this?
Yes, I believed before that the highway superintendent had to sign this also, but...
Or are you making a motion or? On any future ones? On this one?
We had a motion. Table it to the next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made to table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion's tabled to the next meeting. Mr. Krogman?
I guess Brian wanted to say something, I wanted to discuss something, I guess, on it, so, but that's fine.
Motion to table takes precedence and ends conversation, but you can have one afterwards. If you want now, go ahead.
I guess on these two, the way Stacy and I had looked at that is these were submitted prior to us trying to make these changes. I don't have any objections to meeting with these individuals because we have sold, we have pulled the permit from the website now so we can get this review done.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item G, an action to approve agreement number 19-14, a delinquent tax payment agreement in the amount of $7,141.06. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, any comments? Vicky, are there any comments available on this?
This is a basic agreement. This is a property that we would start, if they hadn't paid anything, we'd start to take tax deed to it next year. So hopefully now they can get everything caught up. The first payment has been made, so we're at least into it that far. So, and if they don't stick with a payment plan, then we will proceed at the end of the year like we would normally.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item H is an action to approve an elderly tax freeze application, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, Vicky, any comments?
Yeah, this was another late one. Last year, we were pretty lucky, had one or two, but now this year, this is a fourth one and we may have another one coming in yet. But when you're dealing with the elderly and disabled, in the past, we've usually granted or the commission has granted those. If we can help them stay in their homes, I think that it's best for everyone, so I would recommend approval.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item I, action to approve abatement number 19-01, an abatement request made by Matthew Schmidt for parcel number 40677-00300-02200. Everybody got that? In the amount of $104.70, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. And Vicky, comments on this one?
Both Jacob and I have looked at these. This one is for flooded basement, so...
So did they, did they have to replace it or are they not finishing it or what's the difference between?
Let Jacob answer that. He's...
This one in particular was the flood that happened on July 19th and it completely destroyed their entire basement finish. It has been removed and has not been replaced at this point in time. I think they're waiting on the city to do something with their drainage.
Any other questions of Jacob? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item J is an action to approve abatement number 19-02, an abatement request made by Scott Peterson for parcel number 15980-10951-091-00 in the amount of $1,560.30, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second and again comments, I will leave it to Jacob.
This was a house that was moved off of its initial location February 22nd of 2018 and it was not set down on a foundation until later in the fall, so I've recommended approval.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item K, an action to approve abatement number 19-03, an abatement request made by Dan DeYoung for parcel number 37999-00237-014-00 in the amount of $48.16, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made in second and again, Jacob?
Mobile home that was destroyed July 13th of 2018 and our office was notified early January, so we recommend approval.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item L, action to approve abatement number 19-04, an abatement request made by Brookings Municipal Utilities for parcel number 40412-00200-002-00 in the amount of $49.70, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, Jacob?
Simply a property that's been purchased by an exempt entity, recommend approval.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item M is an action to approve abatement number 19-05, an abatement request made by the city of Brookings for parcel number 4012-00200-001-00 in the amount of $424.42, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Jacob?
The rest of the abatements here on out are all purchased by an exempt entity, Brookings City, and the dates are listed on the applications, so we recommend approval.
Any comments? I think from here on out, Jacob, we need you to report on these. Unless, there's one that you think you do. Any comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item N, an action to approve abatement number 19-06, an abatement request made by the city of Brookings for parcel number 40311-0000-001-00 in the amount of $71.28, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item O, an action to approve abatement number 19-07, an abatement request made by the city of Brookings for parcel number 40265-01000-053-05 in the amount of $30.53, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item P is an action to approve abatement number 19-08, an abatement request made by the city of Brookings for parcel number 40160-00300-010-00 in the amount of $969.53, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, is there any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item Q, action to approve abatement number 19-09, an abatement request made by the city of Brookings for parcel number 40160-00300-010-05 in the amount of $225.47, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Motion carries. Item R is an action to approve abatement number 19-10, an abatement request made by the city of Brookings for parcel number 40160-00300-009-00 in the amount of $1,302.7, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Oh boy, I think we're done with most of it. I don't think I've ever said zero that many times in five minutes of my life, but okay. Item S, moving right along. Action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County Sheriff's Office, General Ledger Line 101-4-411-4250, receipt number 451533, in the amount of $1,897.17 for reimbursement for a damaged patrol car, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Marty, any comments? Any comments from the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item T, item T does have an awful lot of voice bullets, so here's where we start the second half of the alphabet, just about. It's an approval of the highway bids. We need a motion to approve each one as we go through and then we'll have a voice vote on each one. So the first one is an action to award bid number one for rubberized crack filling material for all items listed from Brock White Construction Materials, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion been made in second. Any discussion on the bid? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item two is an action to award bid number two for road oil for all items listed from Flint Hills Resources LP, Marshall, Minnesota, and Jaybro Incorporated, Sioux City, Iowa, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Brian?
I would like to make a comment on this one. After attending the asphalt conference, February 27th and 28th, one of the major points of discussion was supply issues that these companies are facing with the trucking. And that's why I would recommend approval from both entities as the e-logs have come into place, they're finding it difficult to make sure that supplies delivered to counties in particular rely heavily upon the trucking. And I experienced it last year in Yankton to where we couldn't even get oil for possibly a week at a time. Their truckers' hours were out on Wednesday. Priorities are given, obviously, to the state projects, but I feel if we accept both these bids that we'll have a better opportunity to possibly get our oil when we would, when we would need it, when the weather is optimal to put this product down.
Any questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three is an action to award bid number three for three-quarter inch crushed gravel to low bed on all items listed from Sturzinger Construction of Elkton, South Dakota, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item four, an action to award bid number four for screened gravel to low bed on all items listed from Johnson Brothers of Madison, South Dakota, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item five is an action to award bid number five for equipment rental to low bed on all items from Prusman Contract in Brookings, South Dakota, Titan Rental, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Bo's Construction of Brookings, South Dakota, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item six, an action to award bid number six for HR class asphalt to low bed on all items listed from Bo's Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item seven is an action to award bid number seven for Batum and his Hot Mix to low bed on all items listed from Bo's Construction, Inc. of Brookings, South Dakota, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item eight is an action to award bid number eight for cover aggregate to low bed on all items listed from LG Everest, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Johnson Brothers, Madison, South Dakota, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thank you. Agenda item U, approval of bid agreements. Again, we'll do these the same way. Item A is an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash one five. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Brock White of Sioux Falls, South Dakota for rubberized crack filling material. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Most have been made and seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, motion carries. Item two is an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash one six. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and the Flint Hills of Marshall, Minnesota for road oil. Any other motion? Most have been made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Action three, is an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash one seven. Purchase agreement between Brookings County and J. Pro Incorporated of Sioux City, Iowa for road oil. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Somebody seconded? You didn't, I didn't hear you either, okay. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. All right, now we're down to item four, an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash one eight. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Sturzinger Construction of Elkton, South Dakota for three-quarter inch crush gravel. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Action four, action to approve, that's the one I just did, wasn't it, four? I'm on five, here I go. Action five, approve agreement number nineteen dash one nine. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Johnson Brothers Inc. of Madison, South Dakota for cover aggregate and screened gravel, is there a motion to approve? Most have been made, man seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Item number six, an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash two zero. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Bose Construction of Brookings, South Dakota for HR class asphalt. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, motion carries. Item seven is an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash two one. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Bose Construction Inc. of Brookings, South Dakota for Batum and this Hot Mix. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Most have been made and seconded, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Item eight, an action to approve agreement number nineteen dash two two. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and LG Everest of Sioux Falls, South Dakota for cover aggregate. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded, any discussion, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. We are on to V. Covering the alphabet here. Action to approve request to fill vacancy for a deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most have been made and seconded, any comments? Marty, I think you kind of covered this already, is your request. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Item W, action to approve request to fill vacancy for an appraiser in the Department of Equalization. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Most have been made and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Item X, action to approve request to fill vacancy for a part-time membership assistant at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Most have been made and seconded, any comments? Yeah, nobody has any comments, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Opposed nay, let's pass.
I'm sorry.
Let's pass now, you can make comments.
As a point of privilege, before we start the next item, that might take some time, could we take a five-minute break?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
You have a motion of privilege, we'll take a five-minute break, be back here in about five. We are in a short recess.
The asphalt. Asphalt. That's each, you bet each. Then you take the total, go some. Only got one bit.
Mm-hmm. All right, our five minutes has expired. Everybody will have a seat, we'll call the meeting back to order. Item Y is a jails manager discussion. Um, it's to review the construction manager at risk request for proposals documents that were presented by BKV to it. And the purpose of today's discussion is just to go over the document. If you had a chance to look at it and want to make some changes. Uh, we are not making any uh, uh, final determination on the RFP today. But if we have questions and answers that we need, we need to, to put those together today so Stacy can get ahold of them and, and make those changes or get those suggestives implemented. Um, and we'll also have an opportunity to do that between now and our next meeting. So we get those requests to Stacy so she can make those changes. Any discussion on what we've been presented at this point in time? And I just mentioned Commissioner Boersma, this is kind of a boilerplate looking RFP, it has things that are at the uh, Commissioner Pierce mentioned uh, something about wetlands, uh, abatement. We don't think we have any wetlands to worry about at this point, so. Uh, but there are, again, I'm not, yeah, worked through several RFPs in the past on this particular building, but that was long enough ago that I remember all the ins and outs of the RFP. So questions or comments at this point in time, what, to what's been presented? Commissioner Boersma?
I would like to pull together a handful of really good examples that I've either seen or used for other communities and other projects, just to help us set this side by side to other documents. In particular, the, the piece that I don't like most at this point is section five on the selection criteria and the way that they've weighted the selection of this, the CMR. Um, there's no mention in there specifically of things like their ability to successfully complete projects on time, on schedule, and on budget as a means of selection criteria? Or any sort of narrative about that? And I want to make sure that we are evaluating potential CMR uh, representatives as folks who are capable of actually carrying out what they're promising us they're gonna do.
And is that's in selection, section five selection criteria? I thought I'd read that they were looking for firms that were qualified.
They say experience qualifications, but they absolutely make no comment related to um, proving past performance. So you have to give examples of projects, but there's no proof of performance as a part of that experience. And as a forty-five percent of your evaluation criteria, that's a wide margin for interpretation as to what weight that holds. So I think we should evaluate those criteria more specifically.
Okay, so they would have to present project examples.
That's part of the portfolio portion of most CMR proposals.
Okay. I remember seeing a lot of examples, um, presented on previews. On this building here, they had several different ones, but if it needs to be written in here, then that's appropriate.
Most CMR respondents are going to look through the evaluation criteria as a means for organizing their proposals. Almost without exception.
Okay.
Um, so whether they have a boilerplate or they use our evaluation criteria to organize their thoughts and put things together. If we ask for proof of performance, that's what they will give us. And I want to see that very specifically called out.
Okay. Do we agree on the um, forty-five percent on A, five, five, ten, ten, and twenty-five, the general conditions as I produce standard?
Not necessarily, that's part of why I want to have five or six different examples to be able to, to show you based on other, other projects that have been done either in this region or on projects of a similar type and scale. Um, these are the ways that typically they're evaluated.
Any comments on that part of it? I thought it was weighted awfully high on, on A, item A, at forty-five percent.
Do you have an idea what percentages would be, like?
Off the top of my head?
No.
No. Part of it is really just deciding if we agree with these categories as a whole and then kind of reevaluating some of those.
Okay, any other comments on this draft?
Well, I mean, this is my first one looking at, so I don't have anything to really base my decision on at all. So, um, I think it certainly makes sense to maybe look at some previous, whether even if it was this building or another uh, situation where people have gone the at-risk route and have looked at how they've, they've done that. Uh, you know, how the hospital maybe have put theirs, their search together also, and what their document looked like. Um, you know, I think that would certainly be, doesn't mean that's what we have to follow, but at least we have some type of parameters, what is normal and what, uh, you know, has, have gone through, because I really don't have that experience at all in this process, so.
No, and again, this one was built with a, uh, agent rather than at-risk, so the document's a little bit different in the RFP.
Sure, but even the selection criteria would, would still likely be similar.
Yeah, I do remember going through some of these things here, in particular when we, um, not so much for the document being put together, but when we were selecting an, an agent, so to speak, or construction manager, so. Can we have all this ready by the next meeting? Reviewed and, because we have to get things to BKV so that they can incorporate them into this doc.
I, I think if, I mean, I'd like, like you said, that the hospital has gone through this process and there's a couple people that I've spoken to on their process, that they were in line with that and have experience with that. And I wouldn't mind, you know, taking a look at theirs, maybe getting some input. And, and if Angie has some other ones that she wants to email us in, in the prior time, I think we can put it back on the schedule. If this is the only, I mean, again, we can look through the whole documents together and see if they kind of are saying the same thing. And I'm sure there's fairly close, they're probably boilerplate type of documents here that they're probably saying there's a lot of the same stuff. But, uh, you know, I wouldn't mind looking through them.
Yeah. Uh, since you're a liaison to the hospital, do you want to take care of getting that stuff, information and?
I can talk with them and see if we can get that done, yep.
Possibly you and Angie could get together on that and is there any others other than the hospital in this building? This building's was a, yours was actually at-risk at the hospital, wasn't it? Yeah, so that's more closely aligned, but we can, I, I'm sure we can get the document for this building too.
And I'll talk to OSC, Stacy at OSC for some of the campus-related projects, because some of them have been done very well, they have a very standard form, so at least you can see the version that the state uses, the version that the private sector uses, the version that the hospital or a city entity would use, and kind of compare some of those.
Our next meeting is what date? Our next meeting is what date?
The twenty-sixth, I believe.
Twenty-sixth, okay, let's try and have as much of that completed by the twenty-sixth as we can. So we can put together a draft document, Commissioner Pierce?
I also would like Stacy to reach out to our insurance and go through that, the insurance section with our insurer, and that's, that section C.
Okay.
And, and look and see whether the, the limits and the type of coverage and the builder risk insurance, which I'm not familiar with. You know, what recommendations does our South Dakota Insurance Alliance have for us in this type of document?
At what point, I guess this is more of a question for Dan, at what point would you like to review the documents? After it's done? We, we want you to do it before we approve it. So we'll have Stacy get you the insurance information, if she can get it before then, you guys will come up with a compromised document of some sort?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't expecting to put the document together, I just, it was a tough time deciding to vote.
You do the hospital's problems.
Because I don't know, I mean, I'm not afraid to say I don't know what I'm doing here because I've never gone through this. And so I just wanted to see some other stuff and then we can discuss the change. Maybe we can look at it this way, that we go through and we agree on a document with a few changes contingent upon the approval of the state's attorney. And then that way that he can look at it after we've approved it with its contingencies. And if he comes back and says, there's a few things here we'd like to change, we can change it again, I guess, so.
And I can coordinate with the council that the county has retained as it relates to the jail expansion issue as well. Because I mean, we do have counsel that is advising the county commission as it relates specifically to this project. So I think it makes sense to have him review it as well.
Once we have a, a different draft, not this one, I'm just concerned that this draft has a lot more boilerplate than, than what I'm comfortable with. And I, I think Commissioner Bartley referred to the fact that there's in two-point-two A G, it refers to wetland mitigation. Maybe we have a wetland mitigation issue that I'm not aware of, but I, I would like some explanation on that. I also think there's some issue with our numbers. In one place, it says the project will be eleven million, five hundred thousand. And this is important because we're, the compensation this entity's going to receive is going to be a percentage of whatever we're doing. So I look at that number and I think that doesn't include our soft costs then. Then further down in the document, it says they're responsible for reviewing and selecting those items that are the soft cost items. So it seems to me like we have a discrepancy there that we need to address and, and when, when we look at these other, how other people have done it, we can decide, are we having them do that work or not? But if we're having them do that work, I think that amount needs to be included then in what we're looking at.
Would you feel more comfortable if it was Commissioner Pierce, Commissioner Coe, you just get the documents together?
Yeah.
I'm not appointing anybody, it's just trying to use our, our best expertise, so maybe it's Commissioner Boersma, Commissioner Pierce to kind of review this.
Sounds good to me, I can certainly still help with trying to get some documents from the hospital if they're willing to help us out on that end.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this particular document at this point in time?
More so a comment, are, are we, are we making recommendations to BKV for how to, how they are going to modify it, or are we rewriting the proposal for them?
It's a kind, I think it's kind of a combination of both, we have to, it's our document in the end.
Okay.
That's my belief, it's still our document, this is their proposal. We put together a proposal, basically.
Okay.
We'll have them review it too, just guessing something clearly different. I don't think they're gonna get excited if we change some of those percentages and some other stuff, so, I wouldn't anticipate it. Any other comments on that? All right, let's move on to item two, and again, any commissioner can get ahold of Commissioner Pierce and Commissioner Boersma with advice. Scheduling a tour of jails with steel cells, that was brought up to, to go over to Minnesota, in particular over to Olivia, Renville County's jail. I had the fortune of sitting next to Bob Fox is his name from Renville County Commissioner while I was out in DC. And he had offered that they would host us to come over and take a look at their jail. And further conversations later with him, basically would set it up with his sheriff and if they could be there, their county commissioners to help us with the tour and explain the process they went through with their jail. Their jail is now approximately nine years old, I believe, don't quote me on that, but I believe it is. But they did use the steel cells and they've been pleased with them. It'd be interesting to see those, to see how they've held up after the nine years. There apparently have been some improvements to those since they built those cells for them, and we'd see what they are. I know they had an issue with their computer system with their locks, it's gonna cost them some money to replace at this point in time. That system is no longer used, obviously, in the new construction, new cell. So I think it's important to maybe to, to take an opportunity to go over there and take a look at it, if not all of us, at least some of us to take that trip. So they will host us. And an interesting story about the representative that fills Chris's position in the Minnesota Association of Counties. Her name is, is Jill, I can't remember her last name, anyway. She graduated from Brookings High School with my daughter Kelly, and she tracked me down when she saw this jail thing, talking about it. She didn't know I was the county commissioner, she offered to come over to Olivia and join us in the conversation as a sharing of Minnesota's successes and South Dakota's successes, working together with sharing ideas, and she would like to do, she would like to be there. So we'll let her know that we're, we're doing that process and they may come over too. And another thing Bob Fox said, he said, when they were redoing their building, they came over and looked at our building, about the city-county use of a building. What they took back was, they copied this room in their new facility because I liked the layout and how it works. So there's an interesting example, again, of how you don't reinvent the wheel necessarily every time. So I think it'd be interesting, go over and not only take a look at their jail, see if they copied this right, and we'll go from there. So any comments about that? At this point, there was a suggested date from BKV, I think what we'll do is we'll set up our own. We'll set up our date with their sheriff and their county commissioners, does that sound fine? It doesn't need to involve BKV for us to take the tour. All right, I'm gonna have Stacy make those contacts, I gave her Bob's card, and make those contacts. We'll probably do some kind of online poll about dates that work for the majority of us. Obviously, sometimes it doesn't work for everybody, but let's get them, at least, we'll have to post it as a trip. We'll make arrangements to get there and back. What is Olivia from here, about two hour drive? So we can make it an afternoon visit and still come back in the same day, so. Have you, any comments from anybody on that? Okay, still want to do it? All right, it's an important deal. All right, let's go to the Commissioning Department Director's report, item nine.
The first item that I have is the surplus analysis information from January. Vicki had discussed this at the last meeting, but we are right at about average for January month end with that. I also visited with Janet Gritzner with the Daughters of the American Revolution regarding the Medary Monument that we took over, that we now own. She and I had a nice visit about a week and a half ago about that, and she had indicated that there's a grant available through the Mary Chilton Foundation. That, that, the, the issue with that is that the owner of the monument has to apply for the grant. I think they've done all the work in preparing the grant, is my understanding. They just need to get approval from the county that now owns the monument to, to apply for or submit that grant. So if you are okay with them bringing that forward, I'll have that on an upcoming, upcoming agenda. But what that, they would use grant dollars for is there's some repairs that need to be done. There's some concrete steps, the concrete base and some stone masonry work on the monument itself that that grant would, those grant dollars would be used to, to help with those repairs. If we, if we were to receive the grant, the foundation, the Mary Chilton Foundation would also like us to include some signage at the site that speaks to their donation or their grant funding for some of those repairs. So we'll have to look at that too, about what we want to do as far as putting up the signage. I think, I think that will be a requirement of the grant dollars. And then we also discussed upkeep of the site in general and their group, you know, has no issues doing some of the landscaping work. But keeping the site mowed is a concern, they don't have the means to go out there and mow that. And if it was like last summer, it probably need to be done a couple of times a week. I think right now, some of the neighbors have been doing it, years ago, the highway department mowed the site. I don't know how much work that would do, but now that we own it, I don't know if that's something that we would ask the highway department to do, to keep an eye on. But just some things to keep in mind, any discussion about that?
I have a question, I, I do think that, and I, I support us being the grant application applicant, if, if that's found to be appropriate. But what I really would like to know is what are the requirements in that grant for ongoing responsibilities for the county? Is, is there something else that we commit to doing into perpetuity, because that we would want to discuss?
And I can reach out to Janet and ask that question.
And, and does anybody know when the, when the county was doing the mowing, how, I'm not sure how big of a spot that is, how much mowing are we talking about?
You're not talking a lot of mowing, but it was having personnel available to go out and do it. You'd have to haul lawnmower out there and mow it. And if you were busy, it might not get mowed one week, and if you had some spare time the next week to do. It was at that time, one of the, I believe at that time, the, one of the neighbors started, took over and asked, he said, I can mow that when I mow my yard. And he just started to mow it to help us out, so. But it's a, it's a small area, but it does take time to haul a lawnmower out there and everything, so.
Does the highway department, I, I don't know if, since Brian hasn't had a summer here yet, knows the answer to this, do we mow any small areas like that? So do we even have the appropriate size mower any longer for that?
I don't know if we have lawnmower any, I mean.
I think our maintenance staff has a small mower for the small amount of grass that they, they do mow out at the highway shop. We contract all of our mowing for the courthouse grounds in this facility. But I believe there is maybe a small push mower that they use at the highway, because there's a little bit of grass out there that we do right around the shop.
It's a, it's a small enough lot that it can be done with a push mower?
Yeah, that and a weed eater.
Yep.
Smaller than my backyard, which is small.
All right, what?
Because the thought that occurs to me is that, first of all, we own the property now, so we should be responsible for the maintenance. But the other entity that's doing some mowing is the weed department. And maybe the weed department, and I'm sorry that Misty's left because she would maybe want to have an opportunity to comment on that, because they are hauling a small mower around, are they not?
I wouldn't think so, they'd probably haul weed eaters along, but even then, they spray more.
The small mower that the weed department has is actually, they pull behind a four-wheeler, you wouldn't be able to mow that, no.
The other option is to just contract with a neighbor to mow it. I mean, it's a, it'd be a nominal little contract, but we're doing our job to take care of our property and they're in close proximity and don't mind doing it.
That would maybe work as a temporary solution, but it's not a long-term solution.
A long-term solution would be to work with the contractor that does courthouse and the other facilities. Obviously, it'd have some mileage expense, but not a lot in addition to time. We could look at cost adjustment to our contract with them to see if that's appropriate. I think today we need to decide whether we'll allow the grant application to go forward from the county. I don't have an objection to it, but.
And I would bring that grant application here for approval to the board. I'm just wanting to kind of get this initial talk started, so. Okay?
Does that sound fine, we'll bring the grant application in?
Yep, I will work again and get, and get the grant application before you. Moving on, Governor Noem has declared Good Friday, which is April nineteenth this year, as well as Easter Monday, April twenty-second, as administrative leave days for state employees. Good Friday, we do reference in our employee manual as following what the state does. We do not mention anything about Easter Monday, however, so I did include that email with my report. So any comments on that, otherwise we will just plan on the Good Friday as is stated in the employee manual. Okay? You are invited to the Prairie Nightingale Springs Social, Monday, April eighth at six PM, it's at the New Ambulance Station. I do need RSVP by April first, and I can ask again at the next meeting, but I thought I'd put this out there so you can, you can get this on your calendars now if you plan to attend, and if anyone does know, I can RSVP for you.
You can RSVP for me.
You're gonna do it yourself, okay? Mike, did you?
I don't know yet.
Okay, Larry? Put me down, chill, okay? And then another RSVP is the Dashill Dialogues coming up, April fifteenth at six-thirty, that's at Larson Memorial Concert Hall. That RSVP is actually due by the end of the week, so does anyone know if they plan to attend or you plan to RSVP for yourself?
I would be interested in that, I don't know, but we've got four tickets, who else is interested?
Okay.
I would absolutely love to go.
Okay.
I'll check my schedule again, what is the date on that?
April fifteenth, but I do need RSVP by, by this, the end of this week.
I'm gonna be gone in there somewhere, so I'll have to let you know.
Okay, no, okay. And then I had on my report about travel, travel plans to pier for spring workshop, but that was, again, that was canceled due to the wonderful weather that Mr. Hill told us about earlier at the meeting. I provided a, another legislative update was on your desks this morning. A few other dates just coming up, March twentieth, next Wednesday. We do have our Sioux Valley Commissioners Association quarterly meeting, and I believe I've RSVP'd for four of the five of you to attend that. The annual meeting for the Chamber, CVB and BDC, April second. And then April ninth, that is a regular commission meeting date that morning. And then we will be meeting as the Equalization Board at one o'clock that afternoon, and that will be here, here in this room. And then yesterday, at the Mental, Mental Health Task Force meeting, that group is preparing to present their survey report, survey findings. And they want to do that as a joint meeting with the city council, the county commission, as well as the school board, because that task force was created as kind of a collaboration among those three entities. They want to do that on June fourth, that's a Tuesday, at three-thirty, and it would be here in this room. The task force would actually sit here at the dais and, and do the presentation, and then the, the commission and the council and the school board members would be part of the audience and be able to view those results and then ask some questions. We do need to wrap up that meeting by about five due to other commitments in this room. But we thought far enough out to get that on your calendars, that's what they, they are looking at, June fourth at three-thirty.
So this isn't a final report, this is just a presentation on the survey results?
What I understand is that it will come with a written report document prior to the presentation, and then it will be the public presentation of that report.
But it's not the final report of the task force? But it's not the final report of the task force?
I don't know. They never, they never referenced it as the final report from the task force. We can ask that. They do have a couple of meetings prior to that. If this means, once this report is done, and these are their recommendations to move forward, if that task force then is complete, their mission is complete at that point, we can find out at the April meeting.
That meeting will include recommendations, though.
Yes, it will.
So it might be the final.
It very well might be their final report. So I know they're working towards getting, getting that wrapped up, so.
Okay, good.
That's all I have, unless you have any additional questions for me.
Any questions? Item number 10, the State's Attorney's Office report. Dan just told me he had court at 10:30, so he had to leave it. He didn't have much to bring anyway. We'll start with commissioner reports, and we'll start with Larry.
On February 24, 21st, attended the holiday event down at the VFW. On the 23rd, we had a drainage meeting out at the OAC. Like, we made some good progress there in moving forward with the Midary Township Drainage. On the 26th, had an Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board meeting. And shortly after that, we had a JR Jail meeting here. On the 27th, we had a meeting at the Fire Hall, the radio meeting with a couple of the fire departments, ambulance crew, dispatch, and the police department, moving forward with that. Bob had some recommendations today, and we're moving forward, so that's good. On the 28th, had an Extension Board meeting. Had a few comments from one of the members. He was attending the SDSU basketball game, and he noticed our advertisement on the board, on the scoreboard. He had a request. He didn't know if it was, if it was able, but if it'd be possible to note in the ad that 4H is also located out at the facility. That was one of his requests. He didn't know. He just said it was very noticeable and got a hold of a lot of people with that. On the 7th, attended the Towns and Township meeting in the morning there at 10 o'clock. And after dinner, had the weed meeting at 1 o'clock. Lot of good information, and I thank the department heads that show up and give presentations. Have received numerous compliments on the snow removal in the county. It's been a tough winter, and hopefully it ends soon. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Crook, then.
Yeah. On the 23rd, Midary Township Drainage Board Meeting, or not Drainage Board, Drainage Meeting. And then on 25th, had Brookings Health Meeting. We were at the new facility there for the new ambulance facility and teaching facility, which was very nice and very well done. On the 26th, I was at the jail work session, and then after that, went to the BCOAC Advisory Board Meeting. We had that. And then on the 28th, we, I met, we met with Sherry for a discussion of insurance, along with Commissioner Pierce on the 28th, and then met again on the 5th, and Stacy and Laura were there with us. So we are moving ahead and eventually should have a recommendation here in the next week or two of some ideas of, as we're looking into health insurance wise and stuff. So we're making some good progress, I think. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Boersma.
The 23rd was also at the Midary Drainage Meeting. Monday, the 25th, was the East Central Behavioral Health Board Meeting. The 26th, our county jail work session here next door. 27th was our ICAP Board Training with the Executive Director out of Madison. Really kind of an interesting set of conversations that go along with ICAP and the different populations that we serve. So that was, that was eye-opening for me. The 28th, the Domestic Abuse Shelter Board Meeting, and just wanted to publicly remind everybody about the Spark Joy Clothing Drive Deadline and Drop Off Locations. The Domestic Abuse Shelter, part of their spring fundraising effort is that if you bring a 33-gallon bag of clothing and drop it off at any one of their donation sites, they'll truck it down, March 28th, I believe, is the deadline for trucking it down to Sioux Falls. And our Domestic Abuse Shelter gets paid by weight of donations. Please don't stack bricks in your bags. That's not allowed. But that's part of their annual fundraising drive in an effort to maybe pull in another $10,000 to $15,000 on an annual basis. So that deadline is coming up if you've got stuff that you're cleaning out of closets. Saturday, March 2, was the rescheduled District 7 Forum here. Great updates from our legislators. Monday, March 11th, which is just yesterday, the Mental Health Task Force meeting, and discussed specifically dissemination of survey findings and recommendation for the entities that helped to create that task force. So that's what I got.
Commissioner Pierce.
On February 21st, I attended the Joint Powers Meeting. And our agenda included looking at the issue of security cameras, and we're going to be moving forward with that. And we did some talking again about the trim issues in the building and trying to look at, trying to find some solution to that problem. And we afterwards toured the basement just to look at what possibilities there are down there for future expansion. On February 21st, went to the county holiday party, which was fun again. I would just like to plant this seed. The VFW has hosted that every year that I've been on the commission, and it's, it works out really well. But I wonder if it would be of interest to consider, and I'm not sure who does the planning for that, to have our next one out at the BCOAC. Because we have that facility now, it's available, and we could do some different type of activities. I'd just throw that out for consideration. The one challenge we have is we can't have alcohol out at my facility. Well, most of the people that attend that are under 21. There are a lot of kids at that. So I'm thinking we could do something with kids archery and maybe some other things and not have alcohol, but maybe some of the rest of the commission would feel different about that. But I don't think the alcohol's necessarily the big draw for the holiday party. But whoever plans that, that's just, I'm throwing that out for conversation. And then on February 23rd, attended the Midary Township Drainage Meeting, which had a really good turnout, and there was a lot of good discussion. And we are, I think everybody was there, and we're moving forward on trying to work through those issues. On February 25th, I attended the Chamber of Commerce New President Interview Reception, and the chamber has made an offer to one of the candidates. Announcement's pending. And I think that person hopefully will be starting in April. On February 26th, I attended the Detention Center Work Session with the rest of you. On the 27th, we had a Joint Jurisdiction Committee Meeting. We did see a draft of the complete Joint Jurisdiction Ordinance. We're now working through that. So we're moving forward, but it's hard work. On February 27th, I attended the BEDC Meeting. And on the 28th and the 5th of March, attended that health insurance meeting with Commissioner Crookman and Stacy and Laura. And it'll be, I think we are making some progress, and we maybe can find ways for our employees to keep the benefits that they've got and maybe still save ourselves some money. So that's, that's what we're trying to figure out. On March 2nd, we held the District 7 Legislative Forum here in this room. It was well-attended. Again, the room was full. There were a lot of good questions. On the 4th of March, I, as liaison at State's Attorney's Office, participated in an interview with a potential deputy state's attorney. I don't think that's probably going to work out for us, but the State's Attorney's Office continues to try to get fully staffed. Went to the bid openings for the highway on March 5th. And on March 5th, also attended a meeting between the school board and BETA discussing the bus barn. And I asked Stacy after that meeting to email each one of you the agreements that the county entered into when BETA went onto that property. Because there were a couple of things that were said at that meeting about who owned the land underneath the building and what our obligations are in the event that BETA finds another building and what that would be costing us. And I think maybe we should, we should be looking at some of that. Some of the things that were said there, and after I read the documents, didn't really mesh. And I think maybe over time, there's been some miscommunication on how that ends up getting terminated if BETA goes to a new location. But that's something we can talk about another time. What was really interesting, though, sitting at that meeting and listening to BETA and the school system, and specifically what was said, is that they have been trying to find a parcel of land between five acres and seven acres for the last 10 years and have been unable to locate one because of the utility issues, the fire code issues, all the other issues that are, that are part of that. The same kinds of problems that we have when we looked at different sites for our jail. And they've been looking for 10 years, a lot longer period than, than we looked, obviously. On March 7th, I attended the township meeting with, with the rest of you. And again, there was a good turnout, and it was interesting, and the presentation by Mr. Johnson from SDSU was great. There was a Public Affairs Meeting on March 7th. At our April meeting, we're going to be looking at the mission of that chamber group and, and how the different entities interplay and how we get our membership more active and which projects we're involved in. So that'll be forthcoming. And then I did on, on Saturday, I think it was, go out to the home show to see Bob sitting at our booth and, and presenting that information to the public. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank him, because I'm thinking it might not have been a fun way to spend his whole weekend, but the booth looked good and, and he had good information for people. Thank you. And that would be my report.
Thank you. Gosh, I think I attended most of the meetings y'all did too, so I'm not going to cover them all. The NACO meeting, I'm going to give you a report when my voice comes back at the next meeting, I promise. Commissioner Crookman and anybody else, once we get down to the tournament, we get this done by 10:30. So that concludes my report for the day. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Most been made in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose name. We are adjourned. Go Jax.